Sure, Mr. Cantor.
Yeah.
Mr. Goldstein?
Here.
Mr. Mancini? Ms. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Rowena? And Mr. Shulman?
Here.
So you have a form?
Okay, first item of business 2021-06 SPR GNT Norwalk LLC, 93 Winfield Street, site plan review for new two and a half story multifamily development with 11 dwelling units. It says preliminary view, however, we do have the authority to actually approve the site plan. And maybe before we ask Attorney Blank to give his presentation, Michelle, you would put together a document describing the differences between, excuse me, between a site plan review and other approvals. Can you pull that up?
Sure.
All right, and I want to note that Michael Witherspoon has joined us.
Says disable.
You're disabled. Brian, can you take care of that?
All set, sorry.
Michael, we're on the first item.
Did I see it?
That's it. Okay, what we have, excuse me, with this project is a site plan review and not a special permit. Michelle, do you want to explain the differences as you have them up here?
Sure. So what you have in front of you is the site plan review, which is a little more restrictive of your say on the project. Whereas a special permit, we have more say on like the design and a lot more restrictions on it. The special permit has the requirement of a public hearing, which the site plan does not. So that will be up to the discretion of the commission. And that's pretty much the gist besides what you have in front of you.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add, Mr. Chairman, is that another way to think about it too is that the special permit criteria, which are the A through M on the right side, right column, there's more subjectivity built into those conditions because it gives the commission the ability to take into account things like the neighborhood feel, which I know is a contentious comment just in general, but also just how that how a development might fit in, is the bulk and height and density of that development appropriate for this site. Whereas the site plan requirements are much more restrictive in what your purview is. You can obviously place conditions about landscaping and screening and those kinds of things, but you don't have a say in whether, well, I don't like the way this building works. It's not under your control. There are no, you know, in this zone, there are no underlying design standards that are applicable that you can say, well, this doesn't meet this criteria versus that criteria. So you're a little limited in what you can review.
Okay, Michelle, I think you can take that down. And you may, you may remember that one of the primary reasons for turning down the applicant last time was that the number of units was not in alignment with what zoning permitted. That does not appear to be the case here. The 11 units seem to be permitted as of right. We'll talk about this further after the presentation, but I'd ask Attorney Blank to speak to the project itself.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Adam Blank, counsel for the applicant and owner of the property, GNT Norwalk LLC, 93 Winfield Street. I think in light of the discussion you just had, I'll start with something that wasn't on my top of my list, but just big picture that with the site plan versus a special permit, you know, when there's a good reason for there being a difference in the standards that apply. And that's that when people are buying and selling property, they need to rely on the city to know what what uses they can do with the property. And if they want to speculate that they could get a zone change or that they could get a special permit, they understand that they're taking a risk on that and the seller may be asking for a lot of money because they think that you can get one, but there's there's risk there. But when it comes to a site plan, everybody knows that that those are uses that are going to be allowed if you were to purchase the property or to sell the property. And that makes it makes for a sort of a stable buying and selling. It also prevents, not that you guys would, but it prevents the municipal body from essentially discriminating against certain developers and having favorite developers because everybody is subject to the same rules for a site plan. You either comply or you don't. In this case, we believe that we we do comply. If I can share the screen. So we know. Can you hear me? Because my screen is frozen.
Yes, we can hear you, but we can't see the screen.
Okay, how about now?
Now we can see the screen.
Okay, don't know what that was, but okay, so 93 Winfield, you know, corner of Winfield and Howard. Tonight, as was mentioned by the chair, you can have at your discretion a public hearing or not. You could, I think, I think you'd have to modify the agenda, but you could act on it tonight or not. Obviously, we'd love for you to look favorably upon it tonight, but you know, what you do is up to you. We do have Tom Blet, the developer on the Zoom. He can answer any questions. Joe Cugno, the architect, will give a brief presentation. Matt Pop, the landscape architect, will give you a brief presentation. Mike Galanti, the traffic engineer, is present, but we don't intend to have him give a presentation unless you'd like one from him. Similarly, Jim Cositis, the project engineer, is here, doesn't intend to give a presentation, can if necessary, and certainly can answer questions. The old site had the two drive-throughs with the Bank of America, had entrance on Winfield and on Howard. It's zoned in the neighborhood business. It's still zoned in the neighborhood business. And the application before you now is instead of the 14 unit special permit, 11 unit site plan application, townhouses. These are proposed to be for sale, not rentals, as was in the previous application. They are, we're working to get our CAC sign-offs. We don't have all of them now. We'd be happy for you to condition any approval on us getting those sign-offs. And we did have all but, I believe, WPCA sign-offs for the special permit application, which was bigger. And so we don't, we don't anticipate any issues with getting our sign-offs on this application. The, you'll notice that there's no curb cut on Winfield at all. Traffic enters and exits only on Howard, one entrance and exit here, one here. There are three structures, four units, three units and four units. Two and a half story building. These are going to be luxury sort of high-end units. There'd be about 1,600 square feet foot each, so they're on the larger size, two bedroom, two and a half bath with an attic space that can function as office, workout room, or an additional bedroom. Each one of these units will have its own two-car garage. And so there's, that makes 22 covered parking spaces. One more space here, one more space here, and one more space here. You've got 25 spaces. Your regulations require 15 parking spaces, so we've got 10 more than required. We are way overparked based on your regulations. The, and I'll let the architect go through it, but you should have in your packet. This is an overhead Howard is here, Winfield here. A few different angles of the proposed development. I'm not going to spend any meaningful time on it. Again, you can go through that with the architect. We do have a significant landscape plan for the property, which Matt Pop can tell you about. The traffic evaluation report is, I mean, this is, you're going from Bank of America with two drive-throughs to 11 units of residential. So that's going to be a significant decrease in traffic. And the report concludes that the quote, "proposed development will result in a significant decrease in site-related traffic due to the change from a commercial use to a residential development." Mike Galanti, though, can answer any questions you have about traffic or parking. We would be installing a stormwater retention system on the property that's going to lower the peak runoff rates and volumes from what's existing on the site. The roof area and the driveway will drain into that retention system. It's all an improvement from what currently exists. And again, Jim Cositis, the civil engineer, can talk about those drainage improvements if you'd like to hear from him. It, the application now in front of you fully complies with your regulations. You've got a staff memo dated, I guess, today. Going through those site plan criteria that were up on the screen from Ms. Andruski earlier that conclude essentially that we meet all of those criteria with the exception of on illumination. Your staff has asked for a photometric plan. Matt Pop is preparing that for us now, and that will be submitted. We'd be happy to have a condition of approval of the photometric plan. We don't expect there to be any, any issues with that. That will just confirm that the lighting levels are appropriate. The, you saw a minute ago, the, from Ms. Andruski, the difference between special permit and site plan. So those, you've got, that was taken from your regulations and the differences in, in your regs. But there's quite a bit of law in the state that governs the difference between a site plan and a special permit application. And so I'll just give you two brief quotes. The first is from Connecticut appellate court. Says, quote, "In ruling on a site plan application, the commission acts in a ministerial capacity rather than its quasi-judicial or legislative capacity. It is given no independent discretion beyond determining whether the plan complies with the applicable regulations." And therefore, the Supreme Court says, and this is RK Development Corp., First Norwalk, Norwalk was on the wrong side of this one, said that the Supreme Court said, "If the plan submitted conforms to, confirms to the regulation, the commission has no discretion or choice but to approve it." As really, there's no, I don't think there's any dispute that this application does confirm, conform to the regulations. And therefore, we would ask that you approve it. We did get late this afternoon, a few letters or comments from neighbors that came through us through your staff. We haven't been able to spend too much time going through them, but they sort of, there are a few discrete issues that I that I will address. A general concern was was simply that, you know, this would be better served as a park or open space or that simply that they, some neighbors would not like there to be a development here of 11 units or probably anything other than a single-family or two-family home. And, and that's not, that's not necessarily an invalid concern. It's just that the way to remedy that is through regulation changes. And this would have to be in a different zone, and it's not. And under the zoning that exists currently, which is what you are bound by, you're allowed 11 units, and that's what's been proposed. The, the, there were some concerns, one question about a transformer and where that would ultimately be located. And we do think that that when working with the power company, that a transformer is going to be moved closer to the parking area. There was a question about whether the refuse area is is going to be adequately sized for the 11 units. And that, we actually think the, the, the more important question is will, will the service, the refuse company be at the site often enough to empty it, right? So you could have a giant one and it could never be emptied and it could be present a problem, or you could have a small one that's that the refuse company comes every day to pick up and that's suitable. And we think that it's sized right for the development and, but we will, obviously, when it's up and running, see how quickly it's, it needs to be emptied and will plan with our contractor accordingly so that there aren't any refuse issues created from the site. The, there was also a question about how long the period of construction would last and if we were to get a sort of timely approvals, we would expect that from when we got a building permit, six or seven months to, from start to finish on the construction. I know my client is, is, is ready to go once he has the approvals in hand. That's really all that I have to present. I would like to give the architect and the landscape architect an opportunity to give you a brief presentation. But if you have questions for me, I'll, I'll take that. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to, to Joe.
No questions? Okay, all right. Well, I'm Joe Cugno, Cugno Architecture, Wilton. I am the architect for the client. I think simply I can tell you that we've gone through a lot of effort to make this project look a lot less dense than it was previously presented to you. Now with 14 units, I'm sorry, with 14 units now being reduced to 11, we have a lot more open air to the middle of the site. Especially from the Howard side, it's been pushed back enough where we have a lot of space now between the buildings. The buildings characteristically do look very similar to our original presentation. We'd like to look, we had gotten positive feedback and we kept with that. So the units are proportionally bigger. We have multiple areas now on the buildings where we've broken up the facade with some open balconies. They're on facades. And if I could share my screen here, I will go through that with you. For example, this is building A, which is facing, this is the facade at the top of the sheet here, that's now facing the Howard Avenue side. And we have areas on the buildings now that have these recessed balconies. So we feel that this will also help take some of the bulk away from the facade with some open air to them. The end elevations are, again, very similar to what we previously presented. We like the look. We think it's a very upscale look and these will be definitely a premium type of unit now. Even though they were before, they'll even be better. And we've also addressed these open areas that are in the buildings facing each other in the parking area to the right side of the lot. Buildings B and C will now also have these open areas in the middle. As with this one, this is the longer building that's all the way to the right side of the build, to the lot, facing the neighbors. And I think also, just to go back to the site plan, these areas now are much more open. We have much more space between these two buildings over here. We have a very nicely done landscaped area that's going to be raised, that'll help mask some of the parking in the site over here. The buildings are again pushed into the ground, so we are below the street enough where we feel, of course, in this area between B and C, you will not see any of the cars because it'll be face to face. And even on this side over here with building A, the parking level is going to be down enough with the landscaping that it will mask a good portion of that, as with the dumpster and the transformer, that'll be there too. You'll see when we present the landscape plan that we've gone through a great extent to put a large amount of planting along the Winfield Street and the Howard Avenue side. So the property is going to be very well masked. And I think the renderings help show that also, that we're trying to be sensitive to the privacy of the neighbors and try and mask it as much as we can with plantings. The buildings will be there. They will be of similar size in bulk that the other ones were, but we're may try to make a really good effort and try to improve them aesthetically with some of the changes that we have in the layout. Materials wise, the buildings are all going to be pretty much similar to what we had in our previous presentation with the different types of vertical and horizontal siding. The stone veneers, which we're showing in multiple locations on the stairs and metals on the railings. So it will be a very upscale, detailed building. They will not look very contractor-like in any way. And I think also, also the presentation, the landscaping, the site will do the same. The units' plans are somewhat similar to the previous ones. But again, now we have multiple bedrooms in these units to make them more viable for the quantity of units that we have. And I think that's about all I've got for you, unless you've got some questions.
How tall would you say these units stand compared to some of the single-family homes around them?
Well, let's see, if we look at, let's look at building A, for example, that's the, that's the one that's the first one to the left of the site. If you're looking at the street level, which is noted here on the left side at 73, this building from Winfield Street to the midpoint of the roof is roughly 30 feet high. Depending on what building you're looking at across the street, there are some one and a half stories and there's some two and a half story units there. I'd say the blue house, if I'm not mistaken, is approximately 20.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So these might be six to eight, six to eight feet higher on certain ones. And, you know, they vary, but they're, they're not towering over anything.
Thank you.
If there's not any further questions, you can maybe let Matt just overview the landscaping plan.
Adam, could you put that landscaping plan up?
Sure.
Again, my name's Matthew Pop, landscape architect from Environmental Land Solutions. We're out of Norwalk. We've been in Norwalk for about 20 years or so. Again, similar landscaping compared to the last time, starting at Winfield. We have a mixture of small growing trees and evergreen trees to kind of screen the building. There's some utility lines on Winfield that prevent us from having large growing shade trees. Then moving towards the west, towards the left, the one birch tree that's existing remains. That's the kind of the focal point of the neighborhood. Going up on Howard, we have two small flowering trees, but then as we move towards the east or towards the left, we have a number of shade trees. Those are again, the larger growing trees, oak trees. And luckily, but this, the extra space that we have in this plan, behind those oak trees, we have evergreen plantings to screen the buildings. So that's kind of a double-decker planting row. And then we have the foundation plantings again, consisting of evergreen plants and deciduous flowering shrubs. The utilities are screened with the evergreen plantings. The light pole, if you just move slightly to the right of the drawing, just out of the view, there's a 12-foot detail of the light pole. Right, right, yeah.
I can move you guys on the bottom of my screen.
Yep, right there. It's 12 feet. Oops. Actually, it's 10, it's supposed to be 12 feet in height. I think that's the, the number is incorrect. And it's a LED light. It's downward pointing. And it's, you know, we could adjust it. Once we get the foot handle back, we can adjust the lights as needed against low intensity. Which got a warm tone to it, a 3,000K compared to a bright white, which would be like a 4,000 or 5,000. Again, we're trying to keep it residential feeling, so it's a 3,000K. And then around the buildings, around the walkways, we just have low baller lightings. And that's on the other side of the drawing.
Mr. Pop, the, the only budding houses are at the back of the property, the widest part of the property. And I know we've heard from those, those folks quite a bit as recently as today. Can you just go over what, what you're doing on that side to buffer the development from those homes?
Okay, starting at Winfield, working our way up, we have, starting at the bottom of the sheet, working our way up, we have a row of narrow-grown arborvitae. It's densely planted to provide a kind of a solid wall of screening. Right in the center of the site, we have an existing, I think it's a Norway maple, that's kind of on and off the site that remains. As we move further towards the top, there's some, there's an existing arborvitae hedge there. And we're just kind of infilling again with the, some new arborvitae. So we're trying to create a solid row of evergreen plantings to screen that building.
What, what is the full-grown height of the arborvitae? And what is the height of the plants that you're actually putting in?
There'd be green giants when they're planted, they'll actually, I have to look at the plant list, but they'll grow to a 25-foot height. And we got a, you know, a six and the green giants. That's a fast-growing plant.
And what is the size you're putting in?
There's a six in height.
Six feet?
Yes, yes.
Is it possible to plant with more mature arborvitae that are perhaps eight feet tall? Might provide a little more screening initially?
Certainly. I think maybe between, between the houses, we could do that. Maybe where that existing Norway's maple is, I think I like to keep it maybe smaller there so we don't affect the roots as much of that tree. But there's no house right there. But I would say between the structures, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
Do we, do you, Mr. Chairman, if I can just interject, and Matt, maybe you can jump in, or Tom, if you know, but I know on those arborvitae that, because I have a lot of them at my house, that we didn't want to plant them quite that large because there was a concern that that they would dry up and die out when they were that big to go in. Is there irrigation that's going to be there? I mean, can we make sure that they'll survive?
I think that, you know, it's usually the first year is the critical year. After that first year, you know, they're, I would say they're a pretty tolerant plant. So I'm not that concerned. I wouldn't mind it, you know, if they irrigate, if you're going to irrigate it, it would just be something temporarily for a year. And then after that first year, no, I don't see any reason that we would need them.
When you say between the units, can you just show on the map what you're talking, what were you referring to?
If you, if you move the cursor down slightly, that area from there.
Okay, so literally, okay.
So now I would say the ones around the tree and it's kind of in the center of the property lands all meet. Like, I think those who stay small.
That makes sense.
And then the ones further up towards the top, we could, you know, increase the size of those. So.
And is there any, Steve, I guess maybe this is a question for you, or requirement in the approval, or if we get to that point of like ensuring that those stay well landscaped, or it's like, you know.
Typically, the, the requirement is that anything that dies needs to be replaced.
Gotcha. Great.
I think unless you have want to hear from others on the team or have more questions for us, that's really, that's really it for our presentation. And we would ask you to either act on it tonight or to hopefully put it on your next agenda.
Right, well, I'd like, I'd like to have a conversation with commissioners regarding what your feelings about this are. We have almost no leeway here. This is a project that they can do as of right. I fear frankly that if we were to turn it down, that all we would be doing is delaying and costing the city unnecessary expense. I'd also say that we're not in a position, given the language of the agenda tonight, to approve it. We, we can certainly put language in the agenda for our next meeting, which is the 17th to approve it. We, we can certainly put language in the agenda for our next meeting, which is the seventeenth to approve it. But the language here simply says preliminary review. So I don't think that we can approve it. The only question, I think, to the rest of the commission is whether you want to hold a public hearing on this. Given the fact that we have almost no leeway in terms of how we act on it. But I would like to hear from the other commissioners, particularly regarding that issue.
My feeling about that is that we have, since we have absolutely no leeway, and there's no question that this project complies with the regulations. If we have a public hearing, it just exacerbates the frustration of neighbors who are, you know, who are upset about the previous plan. That feeling is overwashing into this new plan, I think. And if it's just done, that'll dissipate. If we have another public hearing, people will spend all this time preparing for the public hearing, testifying. It, it just makes it more and more and more intense, opposition that we can do nothing to satisfy. So that's my opinion, I think a public hearing would not be a good idea.
Thank you, Galen. Josh, did you want to say something?
Sure, I, I think that Galen is mostly right in that, obviously, there isn't a lot of leeway here. The, we are confined by the circumstances. And even if you look, I, I was looking at some of the letters earlier today from the East Norwalk Neighborhood Association and some other residents, who basically say as much, you know, regarding that the, that the developer seems to have complied with the zoning, the zoning constraints here. Well, not constraints, the regulations. On the other hand, I disagree about the remedy, and the only reason I think there should be a public hearing is because I think people's voices are important. And I think that people should, if they have the opportunity to at least say what they want to say, that it's in the record and that it, you know, is something that the developer hears. And as the process moves further down the road, that the developer can work with the community and, and who knows what can come of it. I think that we should, even though it seems the outcome here, I think, is not, I don't think there's really that much doubt as to the outcome. I do think that public input is important, and so I would support a public hearing.
Feedback from other commissioners?
I'm split between Galen and Josh. I, I, I think both of those positions have serious merit. I kind of feel like if we, if we do require a public hearing, it. I, I don't know, I'll go either way.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm very torn too, in the same sense. And also, the thing that may sway you over to the not have the public hearing is the, we can't really do anything about it. So no matter what they say, it's going to be a bunch of, you know, okay, nod, head nods, and I don't know how productive that is.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards Josh, where we, that, we, we all know the project is going to move forward. But to hear public opinion, maybe there's an idea that the developer hasn't heard yet, that would like to incorporate it. For that slight possibility that, that it exists, another two more weeks, I don't think it's going to hurt anything.
Michael?
I have no problem, we have a public hearing to listen to the public and see what they say.
I'm, I'm torn as several of you are. I lean slightly toward not holding the public hearing for, based, based on what Galen said, raising, raising false hopes among the neighborhood residents, that we will, they will somehow be able to prevail in a situation where we really don't have a, a choice. But it is difficult, I'd, I'd welcome a motion either to move forward with a public hearing or not to move forward with a public hearing, and let's see, let's see where we end up.
I'll make a motion in support of a public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so Josh made the motion, Frank seconded, Steve, let's do a roll call.
Sure, Mr. Goldstein? So I, sorry, in favor, I'm assuming the vote is in favor of the motion.
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes, I'm voting in support of a public hearing.
And Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Mancini?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
I don't know, I'm not violently opposed to a public hearing, but I just think it'll exacerbate the discontent. So I.
Mr. Rowena?
No.
Mr. Cantor?
No.
Mr. Shulman?
No.
Okay, so you had. Three, four, three against, and one abstentions, I don't think the motion carries.
Oh, I can vote no. Can I change my vote?
Yes.
Because that's what I really intended, I just didn't want to.
Okay, then we'll, we'll close this out and we'll take action at our meeting on the seventeenth. In the meantime, if, 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 if there are still unresolved issues between the developer and the neighborhood, I would simply ask that the developer listen to the comments of the neighbors and do what they can to accommodate them within, within the parameters of, of the development they're undertaking. I mean, I, I understand that there are limits to what you can do. Now, some people want this to be a park, it simply is not going to be a, a park. We, no one can dictate that this is privately owned property, and we can't force the owner to, to do something like that. All right, with that, let's, let's move on to the next item of business.
Thank you. Thank you.
And that second item is twenty twenty-one dash oh seven S P, Department of Public Works, two eighty-eight Highland Avenue. Install new lights and athletic field conversion at Brian McMahon High School, preliminary review. And I would call on whoever is representing rec, recreation and parks to come on board and begin your presentation.
And so, good morning, Mr. Chairman, I'm Vanessa Valadis, I'm the principal engineer here, City of Norwalk. And we are supporting recs and parks for all the projects now, so also here with me is Ken Hughes. And we also have Jeff Ozenwiss from Stan Tech, so we can present that to you. And so the request is for a special permit on the lighting of the softball field that we're going to now build for the girls at Brian McMahon. And I just want to, so Jeff will go through the presentation, so you guys can see what we're proposing. And also just want to let you know that we're parents, we're ready, that it got approved for this project. And so I'll leave it up to Jeff to go through, and then if you guys have any questions, the whole team will be here to answer.
Good evening, everyone, thanks Vanessa. Do we have the package that we could bring up, the site plan?
I can pull it up, Jeff, give me a second.
Great, thank you.
So in looking at Brian McMahon and understanding the sort of constraints and sort of the density of the, of the site itself right now, the softball field is currently natural grass, clay in field, and is abutted on the southern side by a residential property, the northern side by the parking lot, eastern by the school, and west by Highland Avenue. Currently, the, the field is, like I said, natural grass, all the other fields within the, the school complex are artificial turf. And thank you very much, yeah, this is sort of the existing conditions plan as it stands right now. And the backstop right now, right along Highland and right against the, the adjacent residential property and not, not ideal location, given the noise that usually is located within this area. So we were brought on board to take a look at the opportunity to potentially reorient the field, introduce sports lighting to expand the use of the field, as well as look at expanding the actual field footprint itself to accommodate not only a full-size softball, but half-field, field hockey. And so in our evaluation, we looked at how we could expand on all these and accommodate lighting. So our first study looked at keeping the field in its current orientation and sort of expanding the, the artificial turf into the lawn areas that are currently fall outside the field. We looked at that, how that would lay out, and it did, it was able to accommodate what we were looking for. But again, it really kept the noise still along that adjacent property and along Highland Avenue, which has residential properties immediately across the street. So then we explored another option to essentially flip the field in the orientation you see on the screen now. What that does is it allows us to expand the artificial turf area quite a bit more, allowing a full size or a full half-size field hockey field, the full dimensions required for NFHS softball, as well as moving, you know, sort of the, the congregation area, the backstops, or the backstop dugout, sort of away from the residential property, away from Highland Avenue, bringing them more into the sort of core of the, the school property. And then it allowed us to explore lighting options that would reduce the amount of, of sort of light spillage along the property line. And the city has a zoning requirement along the property lines of light spill. And we did go to ZBA and presented it twice. And we showed them sort of old technology versus new technology, and how this specific layout of the field would allow us to reduce that spill onto the adjacent properties to the best we could, while still providing the appropriate light levels that are needed for, you know, a sport like softball, and even to some extent, field hockey. So, and again, this, this essentially makes this field now, instead of just, you know, for one season use, really expands, including with the lights, really expands the, the playability, the use of the field, obviously would set restrictions established for, you know, evening play and so on. Really just sort of brings this specific facility up to the level of all the other facilities that are on the site for track and field, football, lacrosse, and baseball and soccer. So that was why this area was, you know, was being focused on. Were there any questions that anyone had?
Anyone? Why, why, why is it necessary to have any bleed onto the neighboring properties?
So in order to, and I believe Mike Mahoney from Musco Lighting is on right now, at least he should be. The, the reason why there is bleed is because, based on the lighting levels required for high school softball, there are certain minimum light levels, and therefore the pole heights and the angle and the, 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 the light levels have to be at a certain minimum in order for it to qualify as an acceptable field for NFHS, which governs, you know, sort of high school, nationwide high school athletics. And then obviously, given the proximity of the field, the minimum dimensions required to meet those standards, and trying to shrink in the pole locations as much as we could, we were still not to, able to achieve the, the sort of minimum that Norwalk has as a point three along property lines. We were able to reduce it in some areas, but not, not able to achieve that, just given the, the sort of the compact nature of the site and, and the program size of.
Have you, have you had any feedback from the adjoining neighbors regarding that issue?
No, the adjoining neighbors were notified as required per ZBA. And at our second ZBA meeting, there were no attendees from any of the neighbors that were, were notified or others that knew about that meeting.
Have you done any, beyond what's required by law, have you done any outreach to the adjoining neighbors?
Vanessa, I don't know if you can, you can answer that specifically on the state's behalf?
Sure, we have not, particularly during COVID. What we are trying to do is to just to get the, all the information by mails. But they have been notified now, it is the third time that we sent certified mail to the neighbors. We went for the parents' so, for two meetings, so we have to send that, that, all that meeting out twice. And then we just did the third time for this coming meeting. So far, any of the residents have been proposed or contacted, and we know that they received the mail. I also want to also point it out that although we cannot see this image, the basketball field that the boys are using is also lighted and affects few other properties. It is a little bit, let's say, southeast of that image, where is the softball field proposed? And that lighting is an old version of the lighting, where there is much more bleeding to the properties than the one that we're proposing now.
Thank you.
Come over here and be.
What's the latest, the lights would be on normally?
I can, I can speak. I can speak on that, Vanessa, we're going to follow the same programming schedule we do on our other lit fields, the Brian McMahon Baseball Field and the Nathan Hale Baseball Complex, the lights won't be on past nine P M.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Ken, do you want to tell that we have the automation shut down, I think that would be good to bring on?
I didn't understand that, Vanessa, what was that?
That the lights will turn off automatically, do you mind?
Oh, sure, yeah, we use a, we use the Musco control link system, which basically gives wrecking parks total control of the lights. I'm able to turn the lights on and off via my phone, via my iPad, and I know whether the lights are on or off. So, you know, programs could be set, so in the middle of a game, the lights could go off at, at nine P M. So leagues will, will definitely understand that, there's no play after nine, and we have control of that.
Do you have any other questions? Any, anything further on the presentation, or is that it?
This is Mike from Musco, the only thing I would add is the, we also have to, because of safety, we have to take into account lighting of the foul ball territory for softball, baseball. So that makes this, and because of the proximity of the property lines to the entire, you know, the, the entire playing area, which includes the foul territory, that's what makes this, it's such a tight site. And we, the biggest challenge is the amount of light that gets cast behind the pole. It's cut off very quickly, however, it, it's not a, a straight line behind the pole. So we just get a little bit of bleed, if you will, or reflection off of the, the underside of the visors, because these are all full cutoff, dark sky friendly luminaires, you get a little bit of backlight. But as you can see by the calculations, it, it really does create a curtain of darkness around the field. But that just, I wanted to speak to your point regarding the this spill light that is there.
All right, the action that we need to do is we need to schedule this for public hearing. Steve, does this go on the agenda for the seventeenth? Are we prepared for that?
Yeah, we could, we could do that. So I'll coordinate with with Vanessa and DPW and Wreckin Parks. We'll have to get the legal notices out. Try to get published for Saturday, and then another one for the following week, and then we can add it on for the seventeenth.
Okay, my only concern is that once the neighbors see notice of our public hearing, they may decide that they want a voice. But, you know, that's why we hold these public hearings.
We'll do whatever is necessary to meet the requirements, Chairman.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
Sure. So I said that whatever will be necessary for us to meet the requirements will do, and we'll be back for the public hearing.
Okay, that sounds good. I don't believe we need to take formal action, but in- informally, is, are the commissioners all comfortable with putting this on our next agenda?
Yes.
I see a bunch of heads shaking. I don't see anybody saying no. Okay.
And if there is any other material that you guys need from us, just let us know. We are happy to provide.
All right, if 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 there's anything else required, I'm I'm sure staff will will be in touch with you. All right, very good. Thank you very much for the presentation. I hope there are no long ball hitters who can actually get that ball across Highland Avenue into someone's window.
We're gonna have an ad to prevent that. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is discussion of the zoning regulation rewrite. I thought that we could just informally share with the staff. For those of us who've been thinking about this, changes that we want the consultants to consider as they're working for us on rewriting the regulations. Steve, can you update us on where we stand with the contract with the selected contractor?
Sure. So I have two minutes, and I've got to run to the planning committee.
Sure.
Actually, the the consultant, which is TPUDC, just signed the contract today and was sent to the law department. So the mayor, once the mayor signs it, we'll get to work. We have to just put a purchase order in. They'll get to work. You may recall their first task was to do an evaluation of the East Norwalk TOD draft zoning regulations and design guidelines.
Right.
I had a chat with them about that today. They will have their report finalized next week, and I'll get that out to you for your review. And we can probably put that on the agenda for the seventeenth to start talking about those regulations and moving that process forward.
Okay, sounds good. So things that commission members would like to see in the new regulations. I mean, I'll start it off with with something that I know Nick has brought up more than once. And that is the the issue of green infrastructure. I mean, what role will it play in the new regulations? How will it be implemented? Will it be a requirement, or will it be something for which we give a developer some additional credit? If 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 they're doing green infrastructure. Brian, I assume you're taking notes. Nick, you, anything you want to add to that?
No, I think that covers it. I mean, I think there's a lot of possibilities that we can do, so I think it'd be really interesting to see what consultants say, what works best. I know there's always debates between requirements or carrots and sticks or requirements and credits. I'm not sure in our city whether or not credits are gonna motivate people or be enough to actually move the needle, but I'm sure the consultants have a stronger view and better view on that, whether or not we can do, you know, what's gonna go there. And I think that's, that goes beyond just the infrastructure piece of it, the renewable piece, but also in thinking about green spaces, parking, stuff of that nature as well, and what really want to motivate, you know, the essence of the city. And then that way, you know, it'd be curious to see again what people have done to sort of help promote more the green space, the green, and not when I say green, I mean literally just like park space trees, you know, that sort of environment versus pure concrete jungle aspect of things.
I, I just want to say I couldn't agree more that green infrastructure is absolutely vital. You know, in this day and age, when General Motors is saying that all their cars will be electric.
Yeah.
Ten years? I mean, shouldn't we be requiring plugs so you can charge your car in all the parking lots? I remember the big discussion, and I, as I look back on it, I wish I'd sort of been stronger in the opposite way when Diane Larchella was saying, why not build a roof over the parking? You know, you could generally, you could have solar panels and generate a lot of electricity that way, although it's more expensive in the short run. And that's pretty much absolutely what we should have done. Although at the time, it sort of went by me.
I think it's hard, Galen, when we don't have the, where we've been is the the conceptual support versus regulations sort of pushing it. So I think you're a hundred percent right, though. There's so many different aspects of this to be thinking about. I think it's exciting really for all of us.
And and I would hope that the consultants, who after all do this for a living, can can bring forward a menu of ideas that might not even occur to us.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
One of, one of the the other concerns I've had for some time, and it's become quite a statewide issue this year, is the issue of affordable housing. I mean, right now, you know, if you're doing a larger development, you're required to put in what is called affordable housing. It's not really housing for people of limited income. It's it's a middle-class housing. And the burden falls exclusively on developers who are putting up housing. And it seems to me that number one, the amount of housing you can get from that is limited, both in its type and in its number. And that the the burden for affordable housing ought to fall, or at least in my view, on anyone who wants to do development in the city. I mean, I, I think there there ought to be a certain dollar amount. I think if someone's putting up a, you know, a five hundred thousand dollar private home, we don't necessarily have to burden them with putting money into a pot for affordable housing. But maybe anyone who's doing a development in excess of a million or two million dollars ought to have some amount of money, some percent of the size of the project, not something that's going to make us non-competitive with other communities, but some amount that could go toward development of either affordable housing or housing for for folks of extremely limited income, which then could be given to the housing authority or or nonprofit developer, or even a private developer who might be interested in in doing this sort of housing. So that the effort really falls upon everyone who's doing development in the city and not not just on on people who are putting up housing. So I, I, I think we ought to have a conversation regarding that issue with with the folks who are going to be be rewriting these regulations for us.
I agree, Lou, and one thing I'd like to add to that is remember when they were trying to do that gas station, that Cumberland Farms gas station?
Yes.
They took down two blocks of really affordable housing, you know, old
Right.
buildings, and that affordable housing would be disappearing. So if you're going to do anything, whether it's commercial, it's housing, it's anything, and you're taking down affordable housing, there should be some obligation to replace, you know, replace it with money into a fund.
I mean, after all, we, 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 we currently do have a fund for folks you know, in lieu of parking, a fee in lieu of parking that can go toward building new new parking. I, I would see this as something similar to that. I mean, again, it's it's something the entire commission gets to make the decision on. But I think we all ought to be involved in the conversation.
I completely agree. I clearly agree with what Galen and Lou just said. I would also just add that I think relatively recently, we approved an affordable housing project through the Norwalk Housing Authority, and I'm pretty sure, and I'm forgetting the statistic, that there was a, I'm pretty sure it's a years-long list to get onto an affordable housing, or I'm gonna get the technical details here slightly incorrect, but that, you know, that there is a, not only is there a demand on this, but that it's important, and and affordable housing is more than just a credit or or sort of a throwaway thing. I mean, it's a statement of our values and our values as a city. And I think that Lou has absolutely hit the nail on the head, and that it is a bigger part of our conversation, it's something we should be thinking about holistically, because it is a statement of our values and who we are. And we want to be a city that's diverse and inclusive, and and that that is, that 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 is not just, that's not pigeonholed into a couple categories. That's a holistic version of our city. So I think that affordable housing is key to that. And and I also want to, you know, it's funny, I had a conversation with Nick relatively recently and about this, and we saw there was an interesting article about Westport had been doing on affordable housing, and that they, I think they even created a subcommittee to be more proactive and to engage with stakeholders and to talk about affordable housing in a way that, you know, worked for them. And obviously, it's still an ongoing process, and but I just wanted to give them a shout out because I think that that's something that we may want to think about doing, you know, here in this city. So I completely agree with what's been, what's been set on the subject.
One, one quick any additional point is that there are all these different markets, and they all have to be considered. You know, you've got seniors. We just did that senior development, but it was very high-end. You know, I think we have to think about, well, where where a senior's gonna live, where they can get help. You have, you need mid-market developments that, you know, we have luxury developments, we have affordable housing. But what happens to the mid-market? You know, the like this development they were just talking about at ninety-five Woodfield was a rental that was sort of mid-market originally, and now it's going to be more high-end condos. So and it's a better project, and I understand all the other issues, but we did miss an opportunity for a mid-market rental project. So it's just, we need to consider all these different markets. You know, people's needs through, you know, across the community.
Another issue I'd like to see us discuss with the consultants is the possible establishment of an architectural review board. I've, 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 I've been feeling frustrated by several of the large developments we've approved recently. I mean, I think they've been made better by having our own architect working with the developers. But we're limited in what we can insist that a developer do. Some communities like, I mean, Westport happens to be an example, but they're not only in in wealthier communities. Westport has an architectural review board, which does take a look at the aesthetics of development. I don't know how it works. I don't know how it would work in Norwalk. But again, I think it's an issue that we ought to at least discuss as as a way of raising the quality of design. I mean, we, I mean, I I think there are about a handful of projects since I've been on the commission that I've been proud of architecturally. And there are many more that I have not been particularly proud of architecturally. Again, I don't want us to be in a position where we force developers into projects that are so expensive that we become non-competitive. But good architecture doesn't always have to cost a lot more money. So again, something perhaps we ought to discuss with the consultants once, once, once they're on board. And I, I, I don't know if this last item actually fits in here, but we have our own bylaws. And we don't always adhere to those bylaws. And we're supposed to have a couple of committees, which we've sometimes had, but most often have not had. I don't know whether we should ask them to look at those bylaws or we should look at those bylaws, but if if we can get it in within the scope of what they're doing, I think it might make sense to have them take a look at those bylaws for us. Since, since we're, we're not rigidly adhering to them.
That's a good idea.
Looking for other current initiatives.
I think what we can think about, or curious to see their thoughts on our sort of in the right areas, walkability or pedestrian focus, or for most people, I mean, cities are if it's just getting into the car and driving, place to place. I'd be curious to see what they've done, and if we've done a, started doing this, some of the more recent projects have been sort of exciting. And sorry for all if you can hear all the background noise. The boards are losing me as a jungle chairman right now.
That's perfectly all right. There anything else?
In here.
Brian, are there issues that you and the other staff have been discussing that you want to bring up?
No, I think you've hit on really the three main ones that, you know, we've all been focusing on, which are, you know, green infrastructure, affordable housing, and why am I blanking on the third one? Parking, those are kind of the three, the three big issues that are, you know, at the forefront of, you know, urban planning right now. So those are all ones that I think are going to be ones that, as the consultant looks at, are going to be the three main things that, you know, we hope to have Norwalk be really, you know, like at the forefront of and looking at whether our regs right now are, you know, accomplish our goals or, you know, how how they can be improved.
Thing to go out there on the front edge stuff, if you want to go there. If we want to think a bit more in the future-proofing sense of if cars become self-driving or other things like that, do we want to start thinking as a community how things need to shape, and the infrastructure needs to shape to sort of support that sort of technology and things like that, what we'll need to change in order to support that? I know that's sort of way out there, but I'd be curious to see if they're even thinking of that yet.
I think it's worth bringing that up, because that's only one of a number of different issues that that may, that may come up regarding future-proofing what we do here, including, you know, how how people will be able to access the new regulations. Uh, the new regulations. Um, how, uh, will they be digitized? Um, will it be like an interactive, uh, database where you can go from, uh. Uh, you can, you can click on a property and, uh, see what that, what zoning permits you to do. Uh, within that property. Uh, so there, there. There are, you know, operational issues that have nothing to do with zoning proper. But have to do, uh, with how we implement, uh, these new regulations. And it seems to me we ought to, uh, ask them. Uh, about that as, uh, as well. Because we discussed it at some length in the very first review, the pre-review, uh, that was done for us. Um. And.
And the efficiency for like developers to pu- put projects through and, and to look at that process too, so it. Becomes less, potentially less onerous or more. Of a streamlined thing. I remember that in the, the plan metrics review as well, something to be considered.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Brian, if you could, um, uh, just draw up a list of, uh, the things we've discussed this evening. Um, and, um. Uh, distribute them among, uh, all the commission members. Uh, so.
Right now.
Okay, terrific. Uh, is there anything else, um, regarding that? That we, anyone wants to discuss? If not, um, Steve's gone, um. And, uh, probably won't get back before we're finished. Um, industrial zone study, uh, status report. Uh, can you provide that? Brian?
Uh, I'll lean to, if, if Rich has any updates on it, I just know that they have their next meeting, uh, next Wednesday.
That's right.
And that's, that's about all there is to say. I, I do know that, um. Some of the. Um. I'll call them industrial stakeholders that were on the list of people to talk to haven't been spoken to. And, um, Steve was able to, um. You know, give them names to, or email addresses to reach out to, so. I, I'm hopeful that when we have the next meeting, it's going to be. Oh, a little more productive.
Yeah, I just mentioned, by the way, that, uh, Steve was. The, the tenth is not a good date for me, uh, uh, but, uh, Steve changed time of the meeting to. Uh, accommodate me. Um, and, um, I, I really appreciate that he, uh. Uh, was able to do that. Um. South Norwalk T O D study, uh, the status report. Um. Michael?
Um, we have a, we had a meeting last Thursday. It was, it ran for about an hour and a half. And they spoke, uh, to, uh, basis, the South Norwalk community about, like, the, the changes that they would like to see happen down there. Uh, around the train station and the community itself and what were some of the issues and I believe. Parking came up down there and affordability. Was one of the issues as well as like, I guess, do you want to like try to attract diverse crowd? Down there, but it, it went for about an hour and a half and, um, I think they did the best they could in reaching out to the, um, community. Um, in South Norwalk to get people opinion, then, um. But they had, you know, it, it went well, I would say.
They, they, uh, actually did a series of quest, live questionnaires. Uh, you saw the questions on your phone, you responded on your phone. And you immediately, uh, saw the. The, uh, results in front of you on your, uh. Uh, computer screen. I thought that was rather interesting. What I found frustrating is I had no idea whatsoever. Well, I didn't know, for example, that Michael was at the meeting. I had no idea of the number of people attending the meeting.
Yeah.
Um. So, you know, I don't know if there were a hundred people out there participating. Or if there were fifteen or twenty people out there. Uh, participating and I think it is, it was, it important to know that. Uh, but I thought that, uh, the format they used was. Was interesting, uh, instructive and, and, um, generally helpful.
Yeah.
Um. And they didn't, uh, make the same mistakes they had made at the, uh, previous meeting.
No. They corrected it. Although the, um, translation is also really interesting. There, really, I've never seen that before in a live. Conversation like that. I thought that was great.
They had a number of, uh, as you know, from being a, a couple of glitches there.
A little glitches and like.
Eventually they got it, they got it going.
Cross and all of a sudden I'm listening to the Spanish or the French, like, wow. It's like A for effort.
All right, um. We, uh, the final item is approval of the minutes of. Uh, the, uh, February, February seventeenth meeting. I believe we were all there. Can I have a motion to approve the meeting? Minutes? Uh, was that you, Richard?
It was me.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, and Frank seconds and why don't we just raise hands? All those in favor. Uh, everyone has raised their hand. Uh, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Uh, sounds like we're good. Uh. There anything else? Anyone else, anyone wants to, uh, bring up? Uh. All right, if not, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, Richard moves. It looks like Josh seconded. All those in favor? Hi. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night.
Bye.